Thank you, Pete. Good afternoon. Welcome to the special council meeting Monday, May 20th, 2024. A roll call shows we have Councilor Powers, Councilor Demerit, Councilor Marks, Councilor Bertholz, Councilor Larway, Councilor Kenny is with us remotely. And there's a traffic backed up on Main Street. So we should have Council Baker here with us in a in a few minutes. First item on our agenda is a Finance and Operations Committee matter, including a Town Manager Contract Order Appointing Clint DeShan as the Town Manager and authorizing the Council Chair to sign and execute an employment contract. I would take a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I think we'd start with any comments from the the public before the council has its discussion. Okay, excellent. Seeing that, I'm trying to stall for just a minute. I like very much not to have to miss. This is one of the most important votes a counselor can cast. So which one of us has the most to say to start? No, I guess I would I would welcome welcome comments from Clint DeShan is with us. We've just finished our 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 search for a new town manager, and I would I would welcome comments of welcome or reflections on our process from members of the council before we proceed to a vote. Councilor Powers?
Oh, I just want to say my deep appreciation for everyone who was on the Advisory Committee, and also the people who were our staff members who gave us invaluable input as we were as we were trying to make this very important, very exciting, I'm very excited decision. And I it couldn't have gone better in the end, I believe. So just I'm absolutely thrilled.
Council Larway?
Well, I mean, I'm very excited for Clint to be joining us. I'm also really grateful to Cornell for helping us out for several months now, as we get our ducks in a row and figure out who the next town manager is going to be. I'm also grateful to everybody in the community who came to our meet and greet, the people who served on our Advisory Committee, gave very valuable input and experienced input from many aspects of the town, what's important. I'm truly grateful to you all for your work on that. And I'm just really grateful to Jacob Baker for joining us. Anyway, I'll just wrap up and say I'm very excited to be working with with you, Clint, assuming we all vote yes. And thank you very much.
Yeah, so we'll go to Council Bertholz, then we'll go to Council Kenny online.
Sure. I'll just say, you know, we we made the decision to do a nationwide search and to really cast a wide net looking for what kind of talent do we want to have leading our town? And I think it's wonderful that we had the opportunity to consider some really stellar candidates, and we ended up with somebody who's who's from closer to home, a former Black Bear and longtime Maynor with great experience as a town manager, who I think will be a really tremendous addition to our community. And I'm really personally looking forward to working with you. I enjoyed the opportunity to meet you during the interview very much. And I'm looking forward to to working together with you and staff and community into the future.
Council Kenny, then we'll go to Council Baker next. Leo, go ahead.
Yep. Yeah, I guess I don't have a lot to add there. Again, thanks to the community that came out and gave us their input and feedback. Clint, just want to say we're all real excited. I'm really excited. I'm excited. We ended up with someone close to home as well. And I think that is gonna is gonna I think you're gonna be a great fit and and welcome aboard. We're well, maybe that's premature, but maybe not. So with you. Thanks for thanks for going through this pretty, pretty lengthy process, I would say that we had and appreciate you you sticking out sticking it out and looking forward to having you.
Council Baker, how's the traffic?
It's still there.
Traffic report from Council Baker.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. That's right. So it looks like a lot of people are turning out for our new town manager, given the traffic that's on Main Street, even though Sarah said it was for, you know, flaggers. But anyways, as somebody who came in kind of midway through this hiring process, I was really impressed at the at the thoroughness of what the committee did and and the overall involvement. And so, you know, just the the breadth of candidates from from all over the country was was amazing. And, you know, Clint just had all of the, you know, he kind of ticked all the boxes for for me and for the rest of us. And it was probably already mentioned before this, but, you know, it was a pretty easy decision to to come to Clint. We all kind of convalesced around or convened around a single candidate. So that was really heartening for for me to see as a newcomer. So welcome. And again, sorry for being late.
Councilor Marks?
Thank you. I don't know that I have that much to add that hasn't been said, but Clint, welcome aboard. We are so, so glad to have you here. And really huge thanks to everyone who participated in this process. As somebody who had to coordinate a lot of the logistics and details, I was incredibly appreciative of my fellow counselors and Advisory Committee and the tour team who toured people around town, senior staff, who were thoroughly amazing through the whole process, and has already been mentioned Cornell down at the end there, who's just been amazing through this transition process. So welcome aboard, Clint. It's a pretty wonderful place. Thanks for being here.
The the opportunity, the obligation of going last creates the opportunity to go last, and maybe have, you know, have some things to say. I just I really want to thank Orono for this process. It's going through a transition, a leadership transition of any kind, particularly following someone with the accomplished town manager we had to replace who'd been who'd been in service to our community for a long time, created some uncertainty and some challenges, certainly. And just in terms of like, how we did it, how we did it in terms of the process, just to, you know, we started out, we articulated a vision for Orono's leadership transition and published it, and we stuck to it. And I want to thank former counselor, former counselor Chair, Jeff Wingard is with us today, who, you know, we all can credit, we credit Cornell for the work he's done, credit Jeff Wingard for getting us helping us land Cornell and helping us get off to a really good start with the commitments we made to our employees in the in those first several weeks of the transition, you know, we did, we committed to bargaining with the Law Enforcement Division, we committed to contract extensions and things like that for employees to show people that we we meant it when we said we value our employees in Orono. Want to thank staff, you know, we started out prioritizing services to Orono residents, staff stepped up, took on new roles, really filled in, we addressed vacancies when they came up. As a council, we committed to continuing the work on community priorities through the transition. The search is a lot of work, and Sarah, Marks, and all the councils deserve a lot of credit for all that went into it, as well as the community members. But we kept on pressing on on the things that were important to Orono throughout that process. And we ran an open and citizen engaged search that we committed to in the beginning, even though it created some challenges to, you know, I mean, it's a different kind of an open search in this in this process where candidates come to town and have their names published in the newspaper or seen on TV. It's a it's a more and more communities and institutions are moving away from that. But we really wanted to lean into that in Orono, and I'm really proud that we did it. And I think it I'm really happy with the results that we achieved. Also, very happy with the search, the choice that council made in terms of the candidates that we had before us was really the community's choice. We worked really hard to develop a set of leadership priorities for this for the community of Orono, informed by the input of 300 more than 300 town residents. And it really helped us understand what we were looking for in a leader. It came to an ideal candidate description that was part of our search brochure. And for me, and I think for a lot of us in the council, that was the standard by which we assess the candidates and all the feedback that we got on the candidates. I mean, it came in and it wasn't, it wasn't a vote, you know, you don't do it, you don't do these things by vote, you take in a lot of input and information from the community, you look at references and and prior experiences, and you assess it from what you started out, what you started out seeking in the beginning. And that's because we did that work upfront, which added to the length of the process. I think it really helped us at the end of the process make the right decision for Orono. So I thank everybody who participated and did a part of that. And and for me, it came down to, you know, it's what we did, how we did it, and then ultimately who we selected. And Clint, throughout this, throughout your candidacy, I understood you to be a candidate who was drawn to Orono's commitment to open, transparent, and collaborative government. I saw you as someone who's proven a proven municipal and local education administrator who's going to bring the skill set we need to help, you know, support our staff and lead our staff. You're a people person, you know, you prioritize listening and relationships. And I think frankly, that can that can hinder someone in a candidacy when people are looking for answers. Tell us what you think. Tell us what you're going to do. Tell us what's what it's going to look like when you're our town manager. When you're a listener first and a relationship builder first, that's not necessarily your first, you know, that's not your first instinct to just come in and tell, you know, wow, the room by telling them what you're going to do. You listened, because that's who you are. And it came through, you know, certainly for me in in our interactions and the work we did negotiating this agreement. I think you're an inclusive innovator with the courage to try new things and a track record of success that that we could certainly point to as we talk about what you'll bring to this opportunity. You're a Black Bear grad and a dad returning home to the proud home of the University of Maine. So I want to be the first or maybe the last in this session to welcome you back to Orono. I guess I would ask for all those in favor of appointing Clint DeShan the next town manager of Orono, please. Oh, we have to roll. Oh, we need to roll call. Set up for like a big, so we got a roll call this thing. All right. Anyway, sorry, stepped on my big, you know, whatever. So let's go, let's do it the old fashioned way. Matt, Councilor Powers?
In favor.
Councilor Baker?
Yes.
Councilor Kenny?
In favor.
Thank you, Leo. Councilor Marks?
In favor.
Councilor Bertholz?
In favor.
Council Larway?
In favor.
And I'm going to vote last, and I'm going to vote in favor. So with that, welcome Clint DeShane, the next town manager, DeShan, the next town manager of the town of Orono. You would please join us with a few few remarks and hope we didn't set the bar too high for you.
I wonder, it was, there you go. Thank you. All right. So again, I guess I'll start, but thank you. I have enjoyed this process. And it was as a candidate, and sometimes from this side, you know, I understood what you were going through to find a new manager. But for me, every step along the way, I became more reassured, because the process was very inclusive. And I knew you were really looking hard and taking this seriously, whereas sometimes it can be just a quick decision and a quick fix. And that's not what I was looking for for myself and my family and a career move of this magnitude at this point. And so I'm so glad what you did. I got to thank the community because I watched what you did and the effort you put forward to figure out what you were looking for in a manager. I hope to to do that with as much ability as I can. I will work every hard every day to live up to that expectation. And the same with the staff. It's been a long journey for you, and I'm excited to join you in the next within the next month or so, and and take that forward and build a better community as a whole, and listen more to what we have to accomplish. Openness is an admirable community goal, and we're going to have a lot of work as we want to keep looking for more communication, more dialogue with our residents. I am here to listen, and I'm glad you picked up on that, because knowing what's right for this community is something I can't tell you yet. I know where there's areas to look and to learn, and I want to do that with you the whole way, and all of you, staff and community. I want to add too, I've always visited Orono. I've been a Black Bear since coming here at some point in my life, but I've always been a Black Bear. I love to come back. I tried to make last year, I think was the first year, I didn't get back to a hockey game. I did make a football game, but I didn't make a hockey game. But I love to come back because I always loved this town. And I see it for all its potential and what it can do. And I'm driving around now, and now you you have a different eye. And I'm just even more curious about the potential and the things that will be unfolding in front of us. So to wrap it up, I want to tell everyone in the community, council staff, come see me. I want to hear from you. I want to know what's happening. We'll probably set up some opportunities for more dialogue as well. But I'm going to wait till I get here. I'm going to hit the ground running. I appreciate everyone for understanding everything I want to bring to this and everything I want to bring out of you to make this community better. So again, please do not hesitate. Stop in anytime. I'm always available.
And just to manage expectations, Clint starts on July 8. So we will continue to work closely with Cornell, who's itching to golf a little more than he's been able to. But he's will be making that transition and working together. And I look forward to welcoming you as, you know, in whatever we can do to support you as you get started. And I can't wait to have you here on on July 8. And we'll sign a piece of paper right after the meeting. Thank you. I did want to, before we move on to the next item, I wanted to remind folks that there is a budget, school budget, meeting at 7:00 to and the Chair of the School Board is here. So people are invited to attend that meeting where there is it's a it's a vote. There'll be I haven't attended one of those before. It's a vote process, right, with the with the school budget. So the let the record show, the School Board Chair is enthusiastically nodding yes to my questions. Yeah, yeah, Dan, you got it. You're on to it. Yep. At the high school in the Performing Arts Center. Thank you. Fortunately, I'm already parked up there because of the traffic. The next item is a Community Development Committee matter regarding tandem mobility. And it looks like Mitch Stone will lead us in a discussion on this topic.
Good evening, Mitch Stone, Director of Community Economic Development. I always seem to get to follow these great announcements with these wonderful new things behind it. Obviously, it's a little different that we're doing it this. This is kind of an introduction for you folks. Tandem Mobility had approached the town about doing a ride, a bike share program similar to what you see with the scooters. When they came and they talked to me, they talked a lot about regional connectivity. They had spoken with Bangor, and Bangor was in doing something in Bangor. They have a program in Portland that kind of connects Portland. What was interesting about the way they pitched it was about regional transportation, not about using bikes around town. Okay. And so for me, when they talked about that, the first thing I did was reach out to BACS as our regional planner, transportation planner, to say, hey, if this is going to work, we all got to be in this together. Why it's taken a little bit to get here was because I wanted to make sure that people were on board with this across the region. It wasn't just us trying to do something here, because I think this is an opportunity to offer a different type of transportation. Obviously, Maine's challenged with a small window to use bikes, but we they have spoken with university, Old Town, Bangor, Hamden, all those on the corridor. And I know that you guys have, I shared with you the Penobscot Bike System thing before, and it's online, if anybody's looking. I didn't really want to get too far into it. Basically, what they're asking for us through this process is to sign a memorandum of understanding, which I would bring before you at the June meeting. That is an initial agreement to talk about how they can start looking at sponsorship. Their model is a little different. Most of these use just user fees on how to support their system. And you can read in the newspaper, a lot of these have failed. They work at creating a a system where they they get sponsorship. And there is some contribution sometimes from towns, we can decide how we want to engage that. Most of this is around per bikes, how many bikes you have and how that works. They have lots of options when it comes to, you'll see in some of the pictures, bike racks that are kind of like substations. And they also do geo fencing where you can just put them in certain areas. One of the big things for me was the university being engaged, because for this to work, people need to be able to transport to the to the university. And they are in the same conversations right now. My understanding is that they are interested in and looking at this moving forward as well. By signing the initial MOU, it doesn't necessarily bind us to do anything other than the fact that we're willing to explore this together, and look at ways that we can we can work together. I think it's a good opportunity based on their timeline. Their timeline was based on when they gave this to me a while. I will have to have that updated. And we may not get there this summer. But I think the key for me when looking at this was if we're looking at this as as a transportation, that we need everybody involved, not just us. So it would work very similar to to the program that that Bird has. And they can they can work together. This is really looking at people maybe going from Old Town to Orono, or going to the, you know, grocery store, traveling from Bangor. We do have people. They're e-bikes. They have both e-bikes and regular bikes. So that trip is a little easier on an e-bike than it is on a regular bike. So trying to have that opportunity, I think, is important. So I wanted to bring this up, get some feedback from you folks about it. And then the plan would be to bring the original, the first MOU to you for the June meeting, to see if that's something you wanted to move forward for, so that they could kind of walk down the sponsorship and setting up the system. And and then they would come back to us with a this is what we believe we need, and this is what we think, you know, would work for the community. This would be if eligible to to work for, just like the buses. So there's an opportunity there to be able to fund something at some level. But usually, they do a lot of work with community and, you know, sponsorship. So that's kind of a brief overview. I don't know if you have any questions, thoughts, or yes.
I think you said this early on, but it kind of went past me fast. Are there other communities in Maine already using this system? Did you say Portland was?
So the only other one is Portland right now. And they really looked at the city. They are working to expand it. One of the things, like I said, they did Portland. They said, we're going to go to Portland, we're going to create this system in Portland. When they came here, they went to Bangor, and Bangor was kind of signed on, which is good from a hub standpoint. But in reality, I think the rest of us were thinking, if this is going to work, we all kind of have to be engaged. So but this is this is kind of how they usually start with the big one and try to spread out. I think we pushed the envelope to say, we want it to be spread out, because that's what we're looking for regionally. So.
Mitch, thank you for taking this to the Bangor area transport system, because that just seems like a really good fit for for what we're looking for in the future. And I if I would support us signing this so that they can look for sponsors, me personally, because it doesn't commit us to anything final, but at least we can start, they can start looking, saying, okay, this town would put, you know, a center in, it would, they would be willing to have bikes in this, and now we can go out into the community and look for it. And then if it becomes a priority for us, we might put funds aside for it, too. But it's always a chicken and the egg. Do we get the the bike lanes and everything in first, or do we get the bikes first? Because you could see this being like a stellar thing to get to Bangor if it wasn't just on Route 2. But, you know, I would I would encourage this, because I think any way we can make, we can encourage people to be outside is good for our health. And also, it's just good for the environment. Great.
Anyone else? Council Baker?
Yeah, I think this is a good idea to explore. Two things that I are one thing I agree with you, Mitch, and another thing is if we can't get the university to sign on, then I mean, that's a key component in my mind. So, you know, I think, you know, continue to to explore what they're doing as far as us. And then also, getting the comments and opinions of some of the business owners and because I know that some of the issues in in the larger cities that, you know, have had this type of program for years is just making sure we have the buy in from from the business owners.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Council Bertholz?
Sure. I'm excited about exploring this opportunity further. I really appreciate the relationship building and effort you've already put into it. And yeah, I would I would sign this MOU as well.
So it feels like the request would be to bring this to consent agenda in June. Is that, Mitch, where you want to go with this? So I think that would be, it feels like Leo, do you have anything, any concerns with that?
I do not. That seems like a good plan, Mitch. I appreciate it. And I think it's too bad these birds don't go on there. So that's a that's a hole that I hope we can fill with something like this. So I'm definitely in favor of exploring the memorandum of understanding.
Council Marks?
Also, just wanted to ask, you mentioned that obviously, the timeline we're seeing isn't exactly the timeline. But is it still the sort of thing where they'd be hoping to bring us some kind of longer term agreement at the end of the summer-ish? Or is it further off than that, do you think?
Well, it will all depend on, I mean, I'm looking at this depend on when we sign the memorandum. In June, you're probably just pushed to two months out. So it might be late. They might be able to do things because they've been working regionally. There may be some more stuff there already. There's also a lot of grant funding around this type of stuff, too. And DOT has has in the past in other communities in other states helped as well. So I think there's some opportunities there. I think it's just this needs to get the ball rolling to look at that. I would hesitate to say it's going to be here by the end of the summer. But, you know, I'll I can reach out to to them and get an updated timeline, the way that they see it. So.
That's great. I just wondered what your initial thoughts were. Thanks. Very helpful.
Okay. Thank you. So that sounds great in terms of the consent agenda for the June Council meeting. Thank you, Mitch, very much. Matt, do you want to lead a discussion on the next item? As a Chair of the Community Development Committee and?
Sure. So we are, we had decided as a council that we would like to see some sort of performing arts event happen here in Orono, like has traditionally happened. The organizers of the events in the past have are moving on to other things, and they're moving on in their lives, which is great. And we, as a council, came together and said, we'd like to support this with 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 money. And we went through a process of looking at people who could run an event like this. And we have come up with, and we have agreed to have MJ Sedlock run this event this summer. And so we are now looking at the contract that that she and Cornell have come up together. And and today, we will agree for not agree on going forward with this. Thank you.
I suppose I should have asked for a motion to put this on the table.
Move approval of this item?
Okay.
Second.
Second. Moved in second at order 2489, an order approving the Performing Arts Festival Agreement with MJ Sedlock. So thank you. And my excitement to get to Matt led me to work outside the bounds of, you know, parliamentary procedures, and I apologize for that. Anyone have any questions for other Cornell? Do you have something? Yeah. Is your microphone on, Cornell? I'm sorry.
Sorry about that. Your last order had authorized me to just execute the contract with MJ. But in meeting with her, and she had some questions that I thought we should bring back to have council endorse. And a few of those are in the Exhibit A that she did. And it's going to be called Orono's Art Fest. She plans to have it July 12 through the 14. She will raise money through sponsorships and ticket sales, and those will be retained by the contractor. The $7,000 will be paid upfront. She will keep a an itemized list of how those expenses are done, and will file a report after the festival and meet with the council and to give that report on how the money was spent. So those were just some of the items that I wanted to call your attention to.
I appreciate that. Any other questions?
Yeah, sorry.
Go ahead, Leo.
Counsel? Yeah, I didn't. Can you just just clarify? So there's going to be ticket sales? Is that what I just heard?
This is.
MJ, do you want to come up in, please?
So.
The button, if you could just introduce yourself to those watching at home.
Green light on? Okay, it was already on when I got here. Okay, cool. Hi, I'm MJ Sedlock, the contractor in question. So I put in the contract that there could be income that is received from sponsorships or from ticket sales. One idea that I'd like to at least explore is the idea of having the festival be largely free events as it has been in the past, but then also feature something that I might call like a signature event. I've been offered the Orono Performing Arts Center at the high school and and something that for a low ticket price, five or $10, family friendly event could help fund the festival going forward. So I put those things in there that seeking sponsorships, doing a ticketed event are things that could happen. And I wanted to have language in there about how those funds would be used and things like that. But but very much, it's a short timeline. And I think that I could certainly guarantee those things if we were. But, but very much it's a short timeline and I think that I could certainly guarantee those things if we were talking about a festival for next summer. This summer, it's perhaps more aspirational, but I, I do intend to at least pursue some, something like that. And if it's possible to put it together for this summer, then I would like to, to try it. And so that's what that language refers to there. And then I also just wanted to clarify that my intended name, which is in the contract is Orano Arts Festival. No, no, Oranos, Orano Arts, Orno Arts Fest. Yeah. And so, yeah. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for MJ while we have her and the microphone's hot?
No, but yeah, thank you for that clarification. I think that sounds great actually as well. And that was kind of where I was leading with that question, wondering if that was going to kind of go into a fund for this event. It sounds like maybe that's, well, that's a possibility. It sounds like. So that's, that sounds great. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think, sorry if I could just respond there. I, I think that it, I, I think it's important to keep a lot of free events that are, you know, in keeping with the tradition of Arts of Palooza from the past. And I just want to be clear about the, the language there that, you know, my intention would be that the, the money would be retained that any, that then used for Arts Fest and going forward. And presumably if I were to continue producing Arts Fest going forward, then that money, you know, would be part of, of that. But I'm also not, like Arts of Palooza was run by a nonprofit. I am not a nonprofit here. So that, that that funding going to the next Arts Fest is presumptive of me doing the next Arts Fest, right? And, and so I, I did, you know, discuss with Cornell, like if there was some way that I needed to be returning money to the town if, you know, and, and it didn't seem like there was a way that that made sense with me as an independent contractor, though I, you know, if the council has a different proposal for that, I just want to be super transparent about, about that component of it and, and what happens with any funding that may or may not be possible to receive from selling an ad or a ticket or something like that.
I really like, anybody, good, Leo, sorry.
I was going to say, understood and appreciate that. And I guess to your point earlier, it's, if the, the two pieces are, this is sort of last minute. And if you, if, if nothing else, you learn what's sort of doable, you know, on, on, at, at the last minute, I think it may be, I, I think that all sounds totally fair. Like I hope if there's a method for doing, they shouldn't, wouldn't seem like it'd be completely complicated to be able to figure out how to carry over funds, but maybe it is. And if it, if it is, then you've got at least a basis for how we, how it could potentially be done the following year. So that all sounds great. Thank you.
Councilor Bertholz?
Yeah, I agree. I support leaving things with some flexibility in this contract as written so that we can explore what might work in the future and really appreciate you taking this on and being willing to, to try some, some new initiatives on behalf of the community. I think it'll be great.
Yeah, thank you. I'm, I'm excited for the potential. Yeah.
I, I really, I like the, if others are done, I, I really like the commitment to transparency here, MJ. I really like that. I'm grateful that you've stepped up and, you know, brought your expertise into this. You know, this was something of a, an effort to try and, you know, provide a, an, an arts event in the summer with very short notice. And I love the flexibility. I love that we're going to learn. And, you know, perhaps a different model going forward and maybe a model for other events that we could pursue as a, as a community. There is, we've got a, a real challenge with, the one thing I want, a real learning for me out of this process and talking to the, the team behind Arts of Palooza was that volunteer fatigue is a thing. And we have to think strategically about, you know, how do you, how do you support your volunteers who are doing, who are doing events? With either resources or making things easier or share, you know, bringing more people in. And I'm hopeful that we can learn as a council, as a community, what is, what it takes to, we have so many people who are interested in doing things, but how do we make it easier? So that, or just give that little bit of, you know, that little bit of extra help to make, to keep these events going on. So we're, we're experimenting a lot. This is, this is certainly in that, in that vein. And I think we trust our people and we're going to, we're going to do the best that we can. So when do you think you will be able to confirm that, that July 12th to the 14th is the, is the time?
Um, well, I was hoping that you were confirming it by confirming this contract. I'm pretty, I'm pretty set on that date.
Okay.
The, anything in June feels crazy to try to do. The weekend before is July 4th weekend. And personally, I hope to be out of town for the last two weeks in July, which would make an August festival difficult to plan. So like, that's the weekend. And I did do some preliminary research and doesn't appear like there's anything, there aren't any other major festivals happening super close by that weekend. So I, I, I think you're confirming it.
Okay. Yeah. The word prohibited, you know, unless the venue artist availability proves prohibitive.
Yeah, I, I guess I did put that language in there just in case I reach out to the first 20 artists and they're all like, nah, I can't do that weekend. Then, then I suppose at that point I would find a way to change to what would likely be an August date at that point. But I, I kind of expect with the breadth of artists to have done Arts of Palooza in the past and, you know, with other personal contacts I have of folks who haven't done Arts of Palooza that we're going to be able to find some things there. But again, I just wanted to make sure contractually I didn't commit to anything that I hadn't actually confirmed my ability to do yet. But I also didn't want to start reaching out to artists until the contract, you know, there's a little bit of a, you know, which comes first situation with that. But I'm feeling pretty confident about that as the, the weekend for the event.
MJ, when would we be able to start like publicizing that date, like to folks? What's your timeframe for that?
Well, I have a website built that has links for artists to give me information about their thing. And also again, a conversation to be had about availability of like, you know, closing Mill Street for an afternoon or something like that. But also an, an interest form for like doing a booth craft fair type of thing. And so again, once the contract is approved, I just have to hit one button and that will be available. And then I would intend to share that across all the town Facebook pages and things like that. And everybody can start, you know, hyping the festival from there. And I'll push more information out on that. And, and a Facebook page will be coming shortly after that as well. I can't draft a Facebook page, so I have, it'll take me a minute to build that. But again, I was really just waiting on official, official, yeah, I'm doing this and the town council is all approved of the details before I pushed out those, those things. So, you know, 10 minutes from now, maybe.
Thank you. Really helpful.
Yeah. Anything else? Yep. We'll have to call a roll call vote. So we're, thank you, MJ. This is an order 2489 approving the Performing Arts Festival Agreement with MJ Sedlock. And Cornell, thank you for bringing this to us and the work you did to negotiate it. Councilor Powers?
Excitedly approved.
Excitedly. Councilor Baker?
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Kenny?
In favor.
Counselor Demerit votes in favor. Counselor Marks?
In favor.
Counselor Bertholz?
In favor.
Counselor Larway?
In favor.
Okay, it's passed unanimously. Congratulations MJ and thank you again for the, the great work. Okay. Next up on the list is town council chair and town manager updates. I, I've been busy, but, so I don't have a lot to, the, the report, other than we executed the notification plan that we talked about in terms of our appointment and of Clint. And things are, other budget meeting tomorrow. And the ask is that after we're done with the public work session, we'll be, talk about how we kind of move forward in the, in the interim, two weeks to kind of shape the budget, you know, and to the extent that we, we feel we need to as a council. So there'll be some work that we'll do there. So bring your ideas tomorrow. I think Jacob and I will be, as Councilor Marks will be traveling, so Councilor Baker and I will be kind of points for kind of taking what we learned. I mean, other people are certainly willing to, to be a part of it too, but we'll, we'll try and synthesize what we hear from the council over these times and, and work directly with Cornell to on any issues or questions we want to address. So with that, Cornell?
No, I'm good.
Excellent. And now it's time for a public comment. Is there, are there any public comment? Any hands raised online? Okay.
None at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Pete. With that, we'll, I would entertain a motion. We'll have no vote after the executive session, right? So I would entertain a motion to move into executive session pursuant to one.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt, but before we, I want to, do I go out and then come back into that other link? Is that what I have to do?
Yes, you do.
Okay. Sorry about that. Thanks.
Oh, no problem. Thank, it's hard being a part of these meetings when you're not in the room. So thank you for being with us. So entertain a motion to move an executive session pursuant to one MRSA Section 4056C for review of the 98 Penobscot Street Site Redevelopment RFPs. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Councilor Larway, second?
Second.
Second. Councilor Baker? Now we got a vote. Counselor Kenny, how do you vote on this?
In favor.
Okay. Counselor Powers?
In favor.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Demerit votes yes. Counselor Marks?
In favor.
Counselor Bertholz?
In favor.
Counselor Larway?
In favor.
All right. So we'll move into executive session. We're going to be right here or do you want to go into the other room? Right here? Okay. Thank you.
I'll go up and come back.
Thanks, Leo.